Good evening and welcome to our council meeting for September 24th. The meeting is called to order and would you please join us in pledging allegiance to our country?
Pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the republic of the republic, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please with a roll call? Councilmember Erwin?
Present.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fox?
Here.
Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Okay, this evening we don't have any requests for any continuance of any public hearing or agenda item, but before we delve into the other items on the agenda, I would like to officially announce today that if any members of the public are here to speak on the Many Mansions Hillcrest Drive project, and I see several of you in the audience, I would like to take a moment to share the latest information with you that we have. This afternoon, Many Mansions officially informed City Hall that they are suspending progress on the Hillcrest Senior Project, also known as Thomas Terrace. It is our understanding that Many Mansions, the organization, will be releasing a formal statement tomorrow. So if you're still, if you were planning to speak, we let you know that the matter has been suspended, so you may actually want to go home a little earlier this evening. All right. We will begin the special presentations portion of our council meeting, so please give me a moment to move over to the podium.
Madam Mayor, when you get there, it may be helpful, or the city manager, I see some confused faces up there, and I recognize why the city did that announcement. I think it may be helpful to clarify what the word suspend means and the likelihood that that project's going to come in front of the council.
Before we go into our first presentation, perhaps, where is our acting city attorney is going to meet with some of the residents here that were opposing the rezoning of Hillcrest Drive, and he will personally let them know what it means to actually have suspended this project. It means it is not going forward at this time, and Drew Powers probably has more information. Many Mansions will issue a press release and a formal statement tomorrow. But at this point in time, suspension means, as it has been explained to me, that the project is not going forward. That being said, tonight, we will honor our second annual Faces, Places, and Open Spaces. It's a photo contest, and we have the winners that we will announce tonight. We received many wonderful images again this year showcasing the beautiful landscapes, wildlife, and community spirit in such a great way. I would like to begin by thanking our public information team and the panel of judges who volunteered their time to anonymously select the winners. Thank you also to our cultural affairs commissioner, Lois Cohen. I'm not sure if she's here tonight. Chairperson for the Conejo Open Space Trail Advisory Committee, Mark Langton, and marketing specialist and local business owner, Billy Martin. Can the judges please stand if you are here? Okay, we have Billy Martin. Do we have Mark Langton here tonight? I don't see Mark. How about Lois Cohen? Okay, so we do have at least one representative here tonight, and that is Billy Martin. All right, now let's meet all of the winners in each of the four categories. Please come up to the podium after your name is called, and you'll receive a certificate. I'm going to start with the environment category and our third place winner, Kylie Keegie, for Oak Tree Tunnel. Do we have pictures on our website? Here we go. Very good. Thank you. Kylie, how old are you?
Eleven.
Eleven years old, and she is a third place winner of our photo contest in the environment category. All right, and this certificate of congratulations is presented to Kylie Keegie for being selected as the third place winner of the City of Thousand Oaks 2013 Photo Contest. Congratulations. Where do you go to school?
So Coia Middle School.
Congratulations. All right. Our second place winner is Austin Cordero for his photograph titled Newberry Park Hills. I'm told that our second place winner, Austin, could not be here tonight due to illness. All right, we now go then to first place winner, Lang Ranch Ridge Trail. Do we have that photograph? And it is Johnny Von Harder. Congratulations, Johnny. Are you here tonight? Yes. And how long have you lived here?
Five years.
Excellent. Very good. So this certificate of congratulations goes to you for being selected as the first place winner of the City of Thousand Oaks Photo Contest in the environment category. Beautiful photograph. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The second category is people and places category, and again, I will start with the third place winner, so to speak. Third place winner goes to a photographer who shot a picture titled Wildwood and Clay Mountain, and that is Min Le, or Lee. Congratulations, Min. Is it Lee? Okay, Min has lived here since 2007. Congratulations. It's a gorgeous photograph. Here we go. Second place goes to Mike Colau for Warm Summer Nights. Is Mike here tonight? Nope. Okay. And first place, actually, Min, I should have asked you to just stay down here. Min, you won first place for a photograph entitled teepee in the mountains. You won first and third, and this is teepee in the mountains. Is that the one we're looking at?
Yep.
It is? Beautiful. Congratulations. Thank you for all your wonderful work. The third category is mobile device category. Everybody with a smartphone and a camera was able to enter this one. And the third place goes to Sunset at Staples by Tim Keegie. Oh, that is, are you Dad? That's Dad, yes. Runs in the family, doesn't it? You want to be in the picture, or? Congratulations. All right, second place goes to a photograph entitled Field of Serenity, and it's on your screen right now, and that one was taken by Michael McIntyre. Is Michael McIntyre here tonight? Yes. Field of Serenity is on the screen right now. Congratulations, Mike. How long have you lived in Thousand Oaks?
My whole life.
Excellent. We like to hear that. Here you go. And we're not taking a picture just yet.
Okay.
Because you're also our first place winner in this category. First place in the mobile device category is Michael McIntyre with Base of the Conejo Grade, and there it is. And what smartphone did she use? Not to plug any brand in particular, but?
iPhone 5.
iPhone 5. Here you go. Okay. So now we take, you can hold both.
All right.
Here you go.
Thank you very much.
There you go. Thank you. And we have a new category, the newest category in this contest. It's the Instagram category. All right. Third place goes to Lizard in Hand by Cassie Mungy. I'm not quite sure how to pronounce the last name. Cassie, are you here? Yes. How old are you?
I am nine years old.
Where do you go to school?
Bridges Charter School.
Excellent. I was at Bridges today, talking to the third grade about social studies and local government. Great. Yes. Here you go. Congratulations. Here we go. We want to take a picture with Mom, too. Here we go. Excellent. Thank you so much. Second place goes to Kelly Hammerslock for Cal Lutheran Football. Is Kelly here tonight? No? Okay. Congratulations. And first place goes to Mountain on Fire. Look at that. By Shima Shimanga. Is Shima here tonight? First place winner in the Instagram category. No. All right. Congratulations to Shima on the beautiful photograph and all the other winners in all the categories. Okay, those photographs were absolutely beautiful, and I'm especially impressed with the very young photographers. Again, congratulations. All right. The next presentation is by Southern California Gas Company on the Advanced Meter Project. And I'm not sure who will be giving that presentation. Oh, here we go. Oh, okay. Tim Mahoney from Southern California Gas Company, and you're here this evening to share information on the Advanced Meter Program. Welcome.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council and staff, and citizens and residents of the area. Tim Mahoney with SoCal Gas, you're probably used to seeing Michelle Pettis here. She unfortunately got sick, so I'm pinch hitting for her, and wonderful to be in your town. So very quickly, gas meter, we're your local natural gas provider. It's our job to service the customer, residents, businesses, schools, et cetera, with natural gas so that they can have heating, power, cooking, facilities of that nature, water heating. If you have a pool, chances are you're heating it by natural gas. So I'm going to, is it just a simple click on here to? Okay, so this is a project that was commissioned by the Public Utilities Commission out of the state of California, and what it has to do with, it is the electronic automatic reading of a natural gas meter, which you and I have at our homes. And this module here that you see is the communication device. It runs off of batteries, just like this. It actually operates two minutes every year, and that's because the read from the customer out is in a nanosecond, four times a day. It's a blink of an eye, and that electronic read goes out, and then everything is processed by the gas company as it has been before. So the real benefit of this is that customers can go online the following day and find out what their gas usage is, how much it costs, and things of that nature. So if you're a large customer, you can go on and find out a lot of the information the following day, kind of real time, that in years past, you had to wait 30 days to get your bill to realize if you'd used a lot of gas or not. So hopefully, they'll be saving some money. We also take cars out of the environment, because now we're sending out people and automobiles to read a meter, and this will be done electronically. I think I'm going the wrong direction. There we go. Again, here's the meter. How does it work with those two? Like I explained, from the meter, it goes up to a data collection unit. That data collection is sent down to the gas company, and then the bill arrives at the customer's house. There is no on-off turnoff capability. If the residents smell or hear gas, you're still going to have to walk outside and manually turn your gas meter off for safety purposes, then call us back up, and the gas company will restore the house for free. But there's no automatic turnoff, there's no reading of appliance to appliances, there's no reading from one meter to another meter. This is just a direct shot, if you will, wirelessly to automatically read the meters. We will be doing some big community outreach. This is the first part of it, that I'll be here, talking to community groups. When we do this, there'll be bill inserts, we're going to be going literally door to door. Our own people will do all the turnouts. Your gas meter will remain the same. The only thing that changes is the communications device up here that you see. Besides that, everything in the system works the same. This is our outreach program that we'll be doing. As you can see, we have various layers that we'll be walking around and notifying people, contacting various business organizations. We're actually going to have some grant money available for nonprofits that if they can help get the word out, they will be eligible to apply and get the grant money to do that, so we could assist in spreading the word. We want to be as open, as transparent as possible, and bring everybody up to speed on this, so that they know what we're doing and how we're going to do it. Contact information is here. Pretty easy to get ahold of the gas company, and so that's really all I have tonight. I can answer questions or go into more depth, but certainly, the project is rolling out within the, we'll be putting in the network, say, within 2014, and then the actual meter change out at the homes after that in 2015, 16.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions from council members? I do have a question. I noticed on your presentation, it says that the installation was scheduled to start October 2012.
That's incorrect. Well, I shouldn't say that. That date began the installation in Los Angeles. It is not the local date here, so that is confusing, and I apologize for that. Yes, we have been rolling this out in the city of Los Angeles, where the, most of our customers are over the last year. I believe we're going to have something like, you know, there's six million meters to turn out, so it's a very long phased-in process to get that done.
Now, we had another utility start smart meters about a year or so ago. Did you take any lessons from that process, which was a long process and not without controversy?
Yes, that's one of the reasons why we're starting out early on the communications route, to let people know and explain the differences between the advanced meter and an electrical smart meter, because they're very different. They have one thing in common, and that is, it is an automatic electronic read, but after that, there's probably very, very little in similarity, and that's a message that has to be communicated out. The other message, as I said, is that safety message, and I'm not an expert on electronics, but I believe the smart meter can be turned off remotely. The gas meter cannot, so you still have to have all of the safety features that the homeowner is used to having and doing to take responsibility for their natural gas service. And that is, if you hear gas or smell gas, you want to turn the meter off.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney.
Certainly welcome. Thank you.
Lastly, I would like to invite Dick Johnson, chairman of the Board for California Museum of Art, Thousand Oaks, to provide us with an update and a video on the project. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Bill De La Peña and city council members, the last time the group met with the city council to tell you about the museum, we were the Regional Art Museum. Now, the Regional Art Museum was our original name, because it was, it came as the organization was envisioned by the Conejo Las Virginas Future Foundation, and the project started in their court. But as a result of strategic planning that we've taken over the last year, and with the direction of professional museum consultant Marcy Goodwin, we've more precisely defined our identity as California Museum of Art, Thousand Oaks. And with that, we'd like to share with you our introductory video. After more than a decade in the planning, the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza opened in 1994. For nearly 20 years, the Fred Cavley Theater for the Performing Arts and the Share Forum Theater have hosted local, regional, national, and international presentations. The Performing Arts Center serves an audience that reaches from the Pacific Ocean to the far stretches of the San Fernando Valley, from Chatsworth to Malibu, from Camarillo to Calabasas, and throughout the neighboring communities of Newberry Park, Westlake Village, and Agora Hills. Today, a new decade of planning is underway to add a prestigious world-class art museum to the Civic Arts Plaza, the new California Museum of Art, Thousand Oaks, CMATO. Semato will be located just west of Dallas Drive, facing Thousand Oaks Boulevard and the Gardens of the World. Semato is determined to exhibit the best examples of fine and design arts, painting, sculpture, mixed media, drawing, prints and printmaking, photography, video media, the performance arts and art history, the design arts of furniture, glass, ceramics, textiles, graphic design, metals and jewelry, architecture and industrial design. Semato will offer educational art programs for all ages. When a director of education is hired, Semato will offer a full education program to the public. The museum's programs will inspire students of all ages to understand, appreciate, and create art. The primary audience for Semato's K-12 programs will be all regional, charter, private, and parochial schools. There are more than 200,000 K-12 students in Semato's audience area. Semato will present national and international traveling exhibitions. Upon completion of a secure, climate-controlled building, Semato's professional museum staff will present a lively series of fine art and design exhibitions year-round. Exhibits will regularly present our country's best art and design of the past 100 years. Additionally, Semato will book larger-scale traveling exhibits to bring significant historical artworks from other countries and periods to local audiences. What will Semato look like? Early planning studies are ongoing, and a preliminary concept has been created to identify the building needs of the museum. In the following diagrams, Thousand Oaks Boulevard is shown at left screen, and Dallas Drive, the street entrance into the Civic Arts Plaza, is across the top. The lobby entrance will face Thousand Oaks Boulevard. From the lobby, visitors can move into the galleries, which will utilize flexible partitions and may be seen as a single space or subdivided as needed to support the exhibits. A sculpture plaza or garden may share access from the lobby or gallery area. Classrooms require adjacency to the galleries, and an exterior garden area will be available for outdoor classes. Staff entrance and access to art classes and offices will be accommodated through the service entrance and loading dock area. Offices for the education staff are to be located near the classrooms, but administration offices may be planned for a second floor. A special event space adjacent to the lobby and galleries may host fundraising parties or lectures and performances. The gift shop will have access from the lobby and entry plaza. Phase one is considered approximately 35,000 to 38,000 square feet. In future phases, the museum may expand to include a museum theater, cafeteria, and some additional galleries. As the project develops, some aspects of this preliminary diagram will change. Semato will enrich the community with lectures, studio classes, and workshops for people of all ages and skill levels, a place for regional K-12 students to visit and experience programs designed to extend their classroom studies, a place for seminars, films, videos, book clubs, festivals, and special events, all related to the museum's exhibits and developed to show the best of the visual and design arts, a gathering place to meet artists and make new friends, view the newest and latest in art and design, a family place for outings on evenings and weekends. Beginning with the grand opening in 1994, the Civic Arts Plaza Performing Arts Center has hosted over 8,000 events with a total audience of over 5 million patrons, including school performances for more than 900,000 children. Based on the projected size of the museum, each year, Semato's world-class art programs will draw tens of thousands of visitors. Semato will join the accredited world of professional art museums to offer the public a wide range of artistic products, all presented within the framework of art history. With the guidance of MGA, M. Goodwin Associates, Inc., professional consultants specializing in art museum programming and planning, the Semato Board of Directors is engaged in implementing the museum's strategic plan. It is critical that Semato raise $3 million within the next three years. This Vision Fund is necessary to support art education outreach programs with a professional staff, to establish a startup learning and operations center, and to plan the capital and endowment campaigns to build and support the permanent museum. Major donors with a foresight to underwrite the cultural, educational, social, and financial benefits that Semato will bring to the region are vision donors, and will be permanently recognized for their investment in the museum. Information from the MGA strategic outlook is available in three Semato brochures. The Semato Mission and Case Statement, which offers a comprehensive overview of the museum's history, plans, and programs. Inside Semato, the preliminary concept of museum building with an insert about Semato Jr., the interim startup museum, and Bringing Art and Art Education to the Community, to summarize the Semato vision for both in-house and outreach art education programs. The California Museum of Art, Thousand Oaks, is committed to serving diverse audiences through the exhibition, interpretation, and exploration of the fine and design arts. A letter of support from the superintendent of the Conejo Valley Unified School District states, outreach and education programs for our schools and students would greatly improve our improve our visual arts education programs and inspire our students to expand their creativity and achievement across the curriculum." In summary, the addition of a professional world-class art museum at the Civic Arts Plaza will complement the Performing Arts Center, offer programs in the visual arts for all, stimulate local businesses, and enhance tourism in the region. Your support for the California Museum of Art: Thousand Oaks is welcomed and will be So additionally... (applause) Thank you. Additionally, since the, with the strategic planning, Semato has revised its bylaws and its established number of fundamental policies, which include the Code of Ethics, Conflict of Interest, Gift Acceptance, and Investment Objectives and Guidelines. We've broadened our outlook and experience with expansion of the Semato Board of Directors. We have 12 current directors, and as we grow, up to 39 directors are provided for in our bylaws. Major donors may be invited to participate in the board as we grow. The Regional Art Museum Task Force of 30 community leaders has become the new Semato Museum Council. It has elected its own officers and is providing support to the Semato Board of Directors with a number of important committees and related activities. Semato wants to thank the city of Thousand Oaks for its continuing encouragement and support. I remember in 1983, the Thousand Oaks Cultural Center Planning Committee, the CCPC, of 120 members. The Civic Arts Plaza and the performing arts venues opened 11 years later. Well, the California Museum of Thousand Oaks will not open tomorrow, or next week, or even next month. But we continue to move forward to make Semato a reality for our community and for our Southern California neighbors. And thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, and all of the other representatives here tonight. Good luck. Okay, I would like to go to public comments. Just wanted to make one final reminder that for those of you here to speak about the Many Mansions rezoning project, it has been suspended. Many Mansions will issue a formal statement tomorrow. All right, Madam Clerk, public comments, please.
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for a public hearing item shall be called during that time for the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the City Council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. 16 people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first speaker this evening, Alan Holmes with the Ventura County Transportation Commission. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'm Alan Holmes. I'm the commuter services manager for the Ventura County Transportation Commission. I am here to let you know we're celebrating our annual Ride Share Week promotion, October 7th through the 11th. Our theme this year is "Any Day Is a Good Day to Ride Share." We'd like to take this opportunity to thank one of our co-sponsors, the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District. Why Ride Share Week? We sponsor an annual promotion to encourage ride sharing as a commute alternative and to thank those who are doing it. Carpooling is, after all, the second-most popular commute mode in Southern California. Our campaign this year is based on a pledge card. An individual can pledge to share the ride to work one or more days during the week of October 7th through the 11th. We don't discriminate against modes, carpooling, vanpooling, transit, walking, bicycling, are all eligible. By individuals who submit their pledge cards by our October 15th deadline, we'll be conducting a random drawing. Our prizes this year are iPads, Visa gift cards, iTunes gift cards. And if you'd like additional information, we'll be having an event here at the city on Wednesday, October 2nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We hope you'll have an opportunity to stop by, join us, fill out a pledge card, and get some information about ride sharing. If you're not able to attend the event on the 2nd, you can get information at our website at www.goventura.org. Again, have your completed pledge card in by October 15. We'll be doing our drawing the week of October 21st, and we hope we have at least several winners here at the city of Thousand Oaks. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Any questions? All right. Thank you so much for conducting this contest. And next speaker is Billy Martin, followed by Natalia Staniva.
My name is Billy Martin, and I'm a Thousand Oaks lover. At this time, I am pleased to announce Caneo Valley Film Festival 2, dedicated to this area's filmmaking heritage, showcasing movies representing locations around the world but shot right here. This second year, we have added a second venue and a second day. On Saturday, November 16th, in the Preus Brandt Forum at CLU, we will open at 1:00 p.m. with a 50th anniversary screening of the epic comedy, It's a Mad, 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 Mad World, showing aerial views of Thousand Oaks and scenes shot at Rancho Caneo Airport. At 4:00 p.m., we will show 1940's Grapes of Wrath, starring Henry Fonda, based on John Steinbeck's literary classic. At 7:00 p.m., we will show Bonnie and Clyde from 1967, featuring one of Hollywood's most notable scenes, the last slow-motion gas station scene shot at the former Matter of Taste restaurant in Agora. On Sunday, November 17th, at the Thousand Oaks Library, we will show two additional family-audience movies at no charge. At 12:30 p.m., we will show 1932's Tarzan the Ape Man, based on the Edgar R. Burroughs novel, shot in Lake Sherwood, featuring animals from the Gobel Lion Farm, which later became Jungleland. At 3 o'clock, we will show Elizabeth Taylor's first movie, made in 1943, the British film shot in Wildwood, Lassie Come Home, also based on a classic novel. My hope is to add a Civic Arts Plaza Theater as a venue for our 2014 festival during the city's 50th anniversary, when the proposed theme will be Westerns. Thank you. Hope to see you all in November. Thanks.
Thank you. It sounds exciting. We make sure that we have that on the city's website. Billy, if you don't mind sharing that information with Rachel Wagner. Thank you, so we can put it on the website. Next speaker, Natalia Staniva, followed by Nellie Cusworth. Good evening.
Good evening, dear mayor and city council. We had a great summer getting ready for the season opening concert. My name is Natalia Staniva. I'm Executive Director of New West Symphony. We are the resident professional orchestra of Civic Arts Plaza. I just got back from Boston, where our music director, Marcelo Lenninger, conducting season opening gala for Boston Symphony Orchestra. And I was really proud to name New West Symphony there and make an announcement that he's opening the season with us next week. And I would like to invite all of you to participate in the concert with incomparable violinist Sarah Chang. She is a world-renowned violinist. And I brought a flyer. For those who can't see me. You can also find more information on our website. I wanted to say a few words about violinist Sarah Chang. Sarah is recognizable around the world. She's performed with major orchestras, including Boston Symphony Orchestra, Philadelphia, New York Philharmonic. Actually, she did her debut in New York Philharmonic when she was eight years old, and she entered Juilliard when she was five. And she performed Bruck Violin Concerto that she's performing with New West Symphony next week for her audition for Juilliard. So it's very exciting that we are inviting her to perform. She's never been to Ventura County, and Marcelo and Sarah will present a phenomenal concert. Also, on the concert, Beethoven's famous Overture to Agement, as well as Gershwin Cuban Overture, and Piazzolla Two Tangos, as well as Hinoasteros Four Dances from Estancia. So the program will be very exciting, and I hope you all join us. The website is www.newwestsymphony.org, as well as you can call us at 866-776-8400. I also wanted to say a little bit about the Front Row Club. We have a VIP family club where their families can enjoy the tickets for as low as $10 per child and $20 for adults, and sit in the front row or anywhere else in the audience and enjoy the concert. We also prepare specifically the programs for the students and the children of the club. So I hope you all join us, and I will pass on their information about the orchestra to the city council and the mayor. Thank you. And I know that Claudia and her family, as well as Scott Mitnick's family, are part of the VIP family club, so thank you for supporting us.
Thank you very much for the wonderful program and the wonderful musical programs. Congratulations on securing a world-renowned star such as Sarah Chang. That is incredible that you were able to secure her. All right. Nellie Cusworth, followed by Barbara Andrews.
Evening, folks. Perhaps you've heard, just last year, Jan's announced his plans to develop his 10,000 acres here in the Caneo Valley. He's planning to call it his Caneo Village. You know, he's the one who created Westwood Village down in Los Angeles, and that's been a real success. And just a few weeks ago, Richard Pedersen donated 130 acres up there in the Norwegian Colony to the Lutheran Church. They're planning to build a small college here. Yep, things are starting to happen around here. And I am going to light a spark in this community and wake up the people to the beauty, the graciousness and spaciousness of the land that the Spanish found overrun with Caneos. Yes, there's going to be one hell of a beautiful city here, and I'm going to help see to that myself.
Hi, my name is Nellie Cusworth, and I'm part of the Board of Directors for the Caneo Valley Historical Society. We're a small but very dedicated group who are trying to preserve and promote the history and heritage of this beautiful place to live. You just heard from my good friend, Donna Fargo, as played by Stacia Simral. I want to tell you about a wonderful program that we have going on this weekend called Voices of Old Caneo. Please take a walk back through time and learn what life was like in the Caneo Valley, starting with the era of the Chumash until the 1960s. On this informative and entertaining tour through the grounds of the historic Stagecoach Inn Museum, you will meet many notable people, including the first postmaster, Egbert Newberry, George Hansen from the Norwegian Colony, the last schoolteacher from Timber School, Ella Howes, Donna Fargo, and Joe Russell, whom one time owned Westlake Village. You'll also meet Maria de Lorenzo... Does that mean I have to be done soon? Okay. Who owned land in when it was Spanish, Mexico, and California. I hope you'll all come out and support. I have free passes for all of you. These are transferable. Please come out and support our event at the Stagecoach Inn.
Thank you very much, and thank you for preserving Thousand Oaks' history. The next speaker is Barbara Andrews. Probably already left, yes. Mr. Shocker. John Umbenhauer. Nancy Adamczyk. Trudy Shapiro. Michael Ortiz. Roy Brasher. Philip Lux. Bill Oakes. Carol Clayson. Oh. All right, Carol. Good evening.
Good evening, you all. My name is Valerie Hopkins. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks since 1968. Carol asked me to substitute for her. She had a family emergency and had to leave. And so I'm reading this for the second time. The first time was just a minute ago. "I am Valerie Hopkins. I noticed there is a closed session at the end of the city council meeting regarding Karen Montana versus the city of Thousand Oaks. Karen is the daughter of one of the 13 residents of the Ranch Mobile Home Park who have passed away since the park residents were forced into initiating legal action against the city and the park owner to challenge excessive rent increases at the park. Judge Mark Borel of the Ventura County Superior Court, who is assigned to both cases, has issued several rulings that are very favorable to the park residents. In addition, his honor has strongly urged the city and the park owner to sit down with the plaintiffs under the supervision of a retired judge or other qualified neutral mediator to resolve this matter. It is not ethically, morally, or legally justifiable for the city and the park owner to hold out waiting for these elderly residents to just pass away. I urge you to follow Judge Borel's suggestion to settle this matter as soon as possible. The city should not continue to waste its limited resources fighting the residents of this park who only wish to remain in their own homes with dignity." Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hopkins.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbal Kidway. I'm a resident of Newberry Park, and last time I checked, Director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. It was a pretty sad meeting about the gutting of the campaign ordinance that we have, which has worked for us so well for several years. And if TO TV will be kind enough to show my overhead, I would appreciate it. There it is. Cartoon tells a really great story. It was such a shameful thing that a council member tried to make a spin out of it. I have another one. We were talking about old movies. This reminds me of Catherine Hepburn. This is not showing too well, but I think you can... That's a Hooters sign on the windows. Been talking about it. Picture tells a million words. Completely illegal. It's even on 24/7 now, it seems like. I don't know if they turn it on or off at midnight, but it's a complete abuse of the signs system. No one has even had the courtesy to reply to my complaint. I don't know. I did not do the technicality of faxing this form, so I'm handing it today. If no action is taken, we will take other legal measures. Here's the code that specifically prohibits these kind of signs. Can people in the citizen, in the city, think about what would happen if a dozen or morgues businesses use their windows for an illegal sign like this? It's so shameful that no one on the desk has courtesy to do the public good and stop something like this. This gutting of the campaign sign is such a horrible thing. It was initiated because the dealers with $10,000, $5,000 checks... It was initiated because the dealers with $10,000, $5,000 checks got somebody elected who did not really belong here. He doesn't even come here anymore. And in the last election in 2010, the same thing was done again by two council people, two candidates, and thank God, it was stopped, but not very well. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. This concludes our public comment portion of our council meeting. Are there any follow-ups that assistant or acting city manager would like to address? Mr. Powers?
The only follow-up this time is staff will look into the Hooters sign issue that was articulated by the last speaker.
Thank you. All right, we now move to the consent calendar. Are there any questions of the council regarding the consent calendar? No items that need to be polled? Nothing? Okay, then who would like to move? Mr. Price? Oh, Mr. Adam?
Yes, please. Move the consent calendar?
All right, please vote.
Mayor, I believe we have a speaker card?
Yes, we do. And before we do the second reading, let me call Mr. Nick Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, interested in the minutes, first of all. It's too bad that the complainers about the many mentions are gone. The Dos Vientos hearing, a lot of them were there. TO TV can show that. That's all the minutes show, is the names and pro and con. The minutes are supposed to be a synopsis of what happened at the meeting, and having a video is really no excuse for it. And it's just so shameful that our city continues to not do the minutes and take the time. In fact, I took down the notes of what people said. I don't even know how to type, but I have fairly good notes, and I'm going to make them available to these people. They may not need it because many mentions have withdrawn. Regarding the appointment, that is one of the candidates who was appointed. I have complained for years about Mr. Mazri's rule that was passed by the council that no one can serve more than one committee. If you see over here, this says that one, he was appointed on a standing committee and an ad hoc committee. So even though I oppose the rule, but now since there are so few committees, very few people have a chance to serve. And it's, I was appointed several times on the Social Services Committee, and the only reason I was appointed was that council made a decision to appoint everybody that applied. So in the same spirit of good fun, I, the council people, including the good appointed council member, refused to appoint me and other people to serve our community. It's very macho. I don't know. Politics is really bad, and being a world citizen, I can, I've said before, that basically it is petty and mean. If TO TV can show this gentleman who's supposed to lecture Americans, there's the macho leader. I got a smile out of it. I mean, really, to service to the office that you're elected to. This country and the citizens of this city are exceptional. I wish the people sitting on the, you didn't have to need ropes to prevent yourself from citizens approaching you.
Thank you. The item number 7G is an ordinance for a second reading, and I think we need to do that before or after we vote? After. Okay. Please, we already did vote, didn't we? Yes. Go ahead.
The motion carries 5-0. Your consent calendar. Your title, Ordinance Amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code Related to Official Zoning Maps G7 and Changes to Zoning Classification of Property Located on South Side of Caneo Ridge Road Approximately 600 Feet from Willow Lane. Zone Change Z 2008-70630. Applicant: Compatible Electronics.
Thank you. We move to a public hearing, item 8A, the 2013 Triannual Water Quality Report, to be presented by Robert Carson, Environmental Programs Administrator. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, diocites, and residents of Thousand Oaks. This evening, we're talking about the third, a triannual water quality report that the city needs to receive the report. I will spend a few minutes giving you a bit of background here. I want to assure each of you that what we have here in Thousand Oaks, provided by Metropolitan Cuyagis, is excellent-quality water. The background here is that we provide an annual water quality report to our residents. Each member, each household in our service area is mailed an annual water quality report. The one from calendar year 2012 was just mailed out here in May and June. Every three years, due to some state legislation, we are required to compare the data in those, in that report, to what they call the Public Health Goals, which are adapted by Cal EPA through their Office of Environmental Health Assessment. This annual report compares what are commonly known as our maximum contaminant limits, which the city's water meets, is excellent-quality water, against what these goals are established by Cal EPA and OEH. And those are designed that if money and/or analytical quality were not factors, these would be the thresholds at which there would be concerns about the public health. Our city water is measured... This is, sorry, let me back up here a little bit, getting ahead of myself. The PHGs, these Public Health Goals, are set by the state. They are non-enforceable goals. They're strictly, it's information provided to the public to inform them of where the thresholds are of concern. There are 87 constituents. Again, our water meets all the state and federal maximum contaminant limits. The quality of our water meets all the PHGs, with the exception of lead. The lead that we encounter in our water is not from our water supply. It is water that is leached through fixtures and brass fixtures, copper pipe, old lead solder, et cetera. The other constituents that we do not meet for public health, the public health goal for, are bromate and uranium. Again, lead is from customer plumbing. We have to do these tests every three years. We are currently conducting that as we speak. We pick houses that were built before the advent of lead-free solder. Those are the ones that are most susceptible to corrosion. Our water is considered non-aggressive, according to the state, and meets the optimization goals for non-corrosive or not-aggressive water. Bromate is a byproduct of the ozonation process, which Metropolitan uses to treat our water. Bromine is present in our water from seawater influence of our water going through the Delta, which is our water source. The bromate is a byproduct of the ozonation process combined with that bromine. Uranium, we also see at very low levels, but it is a result of erosive of geologic formations of this water crosses our landscape and gets into our receiving waters. Again, we meet the maximum contaminant limits for each of these constituents. We do not meet the public health goals. For constituents where a public health goal has not been set, the default in the legislation goes over to the federal maximum contaminant limit goals as a basis for comparison. Again, all the federal MCLGs have been met, except for detections of a radionuclide, which is gross beta activity. These, again, are very, very low levels from the erosion of natural deposits. Again, all our drinking water standards are designed to protect, designed to protect public health are being met. For the reduction of the level of these constituents would have uncertain results, may have significant adverse effects on our water quality, and be uncertain to be able to meet. For instance, the gross beta activity has a maximum contaminant limit of zero, and there's not analytical process that's capable of meeting that. There is no further action that is needed or required. The recommendation from staff is that this report is accepted and received by council and accept any public comment on the report. Any questions?
Any questions? I do have a question. I'm not sure whether I misunderstood, misheard, but in which area do we not meet the certain standards?
The three state ones are lead in the customer fixtures. We do not have lead in our water supply. And then bromate, which is the byproduct of the ozonation process from seawater influence, and then uranium.
Okay.
And then the fourth one is the one that does not meet the federal maximum contaminant limit goal, and that is gross beta activity.
Exactly. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. We don't meet that, and why don't we meet that?
We meet the maximum contaminant limits. We do not, and the goal for gross beta activity is zero. The only way to obtain that is through a reverse osmosis kind of process, which would be very expensive and waste a lot of water.
Okay, very good. And just for clarification, we had a presentation here from the Chair of the Triunfo Sanitation District, and this EPA, certain EPA regulations changing to the detriment to local municipalities. Is there a nexus between what was presented that night, where I think now they're suing the state, versus what is presented here tonight?
That's Las Virginas, and they are suing the EPA. It's a receiving water issue. It's not a potable water quality issue. And it has to do with benthic, macroinvertebrates, which are small, spineless things that live in the sediment of our receiving waters.
Okay, and that would be suing the federal government, not the state?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? None? All right, then the deputy city clerk would like to catch up on the announcement of this public hearing we just had. Go ahead.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider item 8A, the 2013 Triannual Water Quality Report. Public speaker cards are available for those who wish to address the city council. No cards have been presented.
Thank you. And since there are no questions of staff, I will close the public hearing and open it up for a motion. Mrs. Irwin, thank you.
I move that we accept the report.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 8B, Deputy City Clerk Mrs. Mann opens the hearing.
This is a hearing advertised as required by law. To open to consider item 8B, a resolution adding a user fee, regulatory permit, appeal filing fee. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and official city record should be presented to the clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. One speaker card has been presented, and pursuant to standards, they are allowed five minutes. The yellow light will display when one minute remains.
Thank you. Here to make the presentation is our Revenue Operations Manager, Melissa Ortado. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor DeBildepeña, and council members. I'm here tonight to propose the addition of a fee to the citywide user fee manual of $110 for a regulatory permit appeal filing fee. The city issues regulatory permits to several industries, including massage, taxi, door-to-door solicitors, pawnbrokers, and street vendors. Applicants for regulatory permits are required to submit to a criminal background check and meet other requirements which vary by industry. Based on this information, Thousand Oaks Police Department will either approve or deny the application. When an application is denied, the applicant may request a hearing to appeal the decision. These hearings are conducted by the city manager or his designee, and also requires staff time from the city attorney's office, the finance department, and the police department. The estimated cost of each hearing is approximately $400 to $600. Staff is proposing a $110 fee to help defray the cost of the hearings. $110 is the same amount as the current processing fee for a new application fee for a permit, and staff found this to be a fair and reasonable amount. If approved, this fee would be reevaluated every two years as part of the user fee study. Staff recommends that you adopt the resolution adding a fee of $110 for a regulatory permit appeal filing fee. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. We do have a speaker, Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, Director of Concerned Citizens, Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I don't know. You get to be called a naysayer or negative person, but this country was founded on the Tea Party and wasteful and unnecessary taxes. $110. People don't read the staff reports. It's unbelievable. It says, we used to get two, or maybe one, appeal a year. Now we are getting, we are inundated with four to six appeals. Oh my God. The city hall will actually have to work, open Monday through Friday? That's what this happens. That's why you need $110 bucks. TO TV, please show the city's mission statement. Oh my God, I've been saying, why you are spending, I have a contract for $300,000 with Canon for copiers. Extraordinary service to the citizens we serve is our purpose and product. Wonderful mission. I wish it was true. It talks about, even with $110, we are not going to get full-cost recovery. You folks have forgotten you are in a service business. You are not selling, making widgets. For God's sake. I mean, what happens to good people when they get behind these, now we have red ropes? I hope these are not permanent. I've been talking about this for a long time. My kids played it, I played it, Pac-Man. Pac-Man is never satisfied. That's the same way. In fact, Mr. Cruz is running a marathon at the Senate right now, being opposed to Obamacare. And I come over here, I'm not an extremist. I believe in good government, and I'm a Democrat, and I support and need. But unfortunately, when you see this city where taxes are spent, if I can just quickly show that this is not the most appropriate, but, you know, I supported, I supported Mrs. Irwin, I supported Mr. Adam in the last, hoping that there would be change, but the things remain the same. I don't know. This is from Alcohol Bureau. I'm going to talk about it later, but that's my permit. Not a single dime is what they want. You can have a hearing, multiple hearings, they don't collect anything, and they give you the time of the day. And if you make cogent arguments, they will accept the appeal. If you don't, they will reject it. And some of my, some of us filed the appeal for Hooters, and some of them had arguments that did not satisfy them, and they said no. But some of us made cogent arguments, and they expected it. For God's sake, come back to your mission statement. Extraordinary service to the citizens we serve is our purpose and product. Don't nickel and dime the citizens. I mean, $110 times three, I mean, $300. I mean, this is not even worth the time of the council. I mean, look at this horribly beautiful theater. I say horribly because our taxes are paying for it. It's not needed. I enjoyed them, and so did those people who could have come to the Dos Vientos meeting, because I could see the whites of the eyes. I mean, we had interaction with the people. Now we have a rope. You sit there, you can't hardly hear in this, in this chamber, and it costs so much money to operate. How about trying to reduce the cost of government? In fact, I just heard, which I heard from my, I've said before, from my father in the 60s, who was a government servant, and he would say, well, we have to spend the money because the year-end is coming, and if you don't spend the money, our budget will be reduced. And this is the exact same thing that they were talking about on TV, that I guess they run the budget through September, that there are actually now consultants that actually look into accounts for different agencies to see where the money is, and they, they give that to companies, stuff like that, for a fee, so that the money can be expended. $110, it's not worth it. Don't disappoint me. At least have some votes against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Are there any questions of staff regarding item 8B? None. I will close the public hearing and open it up to a motion. Mr. Price.
I'll move approval of staff's recommendation.
Can you please vote again? I forgot to clear it. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Now we move to department reports. Item 9A. This will be presented by our Code Compliance Manager, Jeff Ware, requests for a letter of public convenience, in concert with Randy Pentez, our police chief. I would also like to direct your attention to our supplemental packet, which is, which contains material related to this particular item, support letters. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight before you is a request for a letter of public convenience and necessity for a proposed convenience store, agave liquor and wine, located at a building currently under construction at 2400 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Staff's recommendation is to deny the request and authorize the Community Development Director to send an appropriate letter to ABC with that decision. In 1995, the city council adopted a resolution in response to an adopted state law as it relates to permits issued by the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, commonly referred to as ABC. The law at that time established a limited ability for a local jurisdiction to control new retail or off-sale permits and bar tavern permits, when a census district was determined to be over-concentrated with such licenses. If a particular census tract is deemed over-concentrated by ABC, prior to issuing a license, ABC requires an approved letter of public convenience and necessity from the local jurisdiction. The proposed store is located in Census Tract 71. ABC has determined the allowable off-sale permits in this census tract to be over-concentrated, and that number would be a total of anything in addition to four permits. Currently, there are eight off-sale licenses in this census tract. A list of the permitted businesses, five of which are considered a market convenience store, is located in the Police Department's memorandum identified as Attachment 3. In establishing the city's process pursuant to the city council resolution, city staff reviews three basic principles. One is the crime rate in the Police Department's established reporting district of the proposed business location. Overconcentration is established by ABC standards, including its location in relation to public private schools or other incompatible facilities. And third, whether it meets the definition of public convenience and necessity. The applicant has described this business, agave liquor and wine, as a convenience store that will be approximately 70% of the floor area committed to a food convenience store items, and approximately 30% of the floor area for alcohol sales. Alcohol sales will include beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The applicant currently holds a type 21 license, which allows this type of sales of alcohol. Requests of public convenience and necessity are looked at also on the nature of what the alcohol sale is. An example, one example is obviously this convenience store type business. The other example would be something similar to a hotel, where, where the alcohol sales are mostly for the people who are staying at the hotel. They go in, they buy alcohol, they go up to their room. It's not really a mass sale of alcohol that you would see in a, more in a retail-type One of the things that also looked at is really how the sales in relation to some of these examples would impact the surrounding community. This particular denial recommendation is based on the Police Department's concern that within this reporting district, crimes are approximately 280% above the average of other reporting districts within Thousand Oaks. A similar business was looked at in 2011. At that point in time, in this same reporting district, crimes were about approximately 170% above that. So it has grown approximately another 110% since that, that determination was made. That particular application was withdrawn, and it did not come before the council. The increased crime rate factor, in conjunction with the retail nature of the business for general sale of alcohol for off-site consumption in an area that is over-concentrated and has other nearby retail alcohol, has raised sufficient concern that additional alcohol sales would negatively impact the surrounding area. This displayed map shows the reporting district referred to in the Police Department's memorandum. It's basically bordered by Canel School to the west, pretty much the auto mall drive to the east with a, with a cut across Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and the freeway to the south. Staff is available for questions, including Chief Pentz, as it relates to some of the crime statistical data.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. And Councilmember Price has a question.
That statistic there was, or percentage was somewhat alarming. Chief, are you able to give us some idea of the crimes that are occurring in that area there?
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of the council. Jeff, could you go back to the, to the map? The RDAs, we typically call them, reporting district, and there are over 100 reporting districts in the city of Thousand Oaks. And we look at these, and this particular reporting district within the city has the sixth highest calls for service. And as Jeff mentioned, in part, and crime reports taken. In 2011, there was an application where it was over 170%. Currently, it's 281% higher. But those are, those are important numbers, but what's more important, what type of numbers are there? What type of crimes are occurring there? And when we look at that, and I, from the past 19 months, and this reporting district, which I said is the sixth highest, give you an example, assault 17, burglary 17, burglary of vehicles 22, 25 domestic violence reports, 41 thefts. It's very, very busy, and we look at that as well. And in 2011, when the application was pulled, it was for the same type of store. We look at these on a case-by-case basis. It's just not a blanket where we say no. We look at, where is the store going to be? And give you an example, if it's a store on Thousand Oaks Boulevard that faces the street, and it's well-lit, you typically don't have juveniles asking adults to buy alcohol for them, people drinking out in front or in the back. It's patrolled much more regularly. In this type of business, set back, and typically with these businesses, convenience and alcohol, oftentimes you have people that'll get a sandwich and a six-pack of beer and sit in the parking lot and drink. For us, for our deputies, and we query our patrol deputies, besides just looking at the numbers, what are you facing there? And how big of an impact would it have? We also look at this particular area. There are two parks. There's a condominium complex. There's an elementary school in this area, and that factors into our decision as well. So when you look at the type of crimes, and when we look at the saturation in the area, from four to eight, and this would be the ninth, overall, that's why we, we want to deny the application for this particular location.
Thank you, Chief. I do have a question. The, what is the highest district? The highest reporting district?
It's, it's the area just to the west, and...
West of this particular one?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mayor, west of this reporting district. And that would be, there were 250 crimes reported in this district. That district, which is the number one, is 437.
And do we know of any alcohol stores, liquor stores, or anything in that district?
I'd have to look. I have not, I did not look at that data. I looked at the saturation and the impact on the citizens in this particular area.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on that side? None? Okay. We do have speakers. First speaker is the applicant, Maria Cypress, or Cipress, followed by John, John, well, John, and Paula Williams, and then Nick Kidway. And you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. My name is Maria Cypress, and we're trying to open a new, new business in the city of Thousand Oaks. We are here to let you know why we are a good asset to this city. We moved from Santa Barbara to Thousand Oaks in January 1999, with two boys and one in the way, with $190,000 and a dream of owning our own business. A few months after, we bought a beautiful home by Earbs across the street from the DMV. We tried to go on partnership with the owner of Burger King, an arboles, and after we tried to buy the mobile gas station across the street, the street from Thousand Oaks High, but at the last minute, things didn't look, things didn't look right, so we decided not to buy in. For a year and a half, my husband and I commuted to Santa Barbara to work as private nurses. It was not easy having two kits and diapers. And 2001, we bought Quick Stop Market in Simi Valley. We had the business for 12 years. And 2007, we got a recognition from the state senate, and from the California Legislative Assembly that they're holding, and from the California Lottery for being involved in the community. I would open at 7:00 AM, and my husband would close at 10:00 PM. During this time, we met a lot of wonderful people that helped us raise money for organizations like Relay for Life, St. Jude's Children's Hospital. My husband also participated with the Sheriff's Department, raising money in motorcycle runs, and where they closed the 405 freeway, and also with the Fire Department, a national Nation of Patriots tour fundraising effort to carry the flag through 48 states in 100 days. The police officers really liked us and respected us for being part of the community. And they also got to meet my son, Michael. He attended Thousand Oaks High. If he didn't have practice for football after school, he would ride his bike to Simi Valley to stock my shelves in the store. He's now a manager for American Tires. And his wife, Katie, is a registered nurse for UCLA Hospital. Juniors in 10th grade, and Victoria as a freshman. They're both attending Thousand Oaks High. And before that, they attended Los Ruidos, an after-school program at the Boys and Girls Club, and summers too. Our business is not, is not just a liquor store, it's also a mini-market. Yes, we do have a liquor license, but we also sell groceries, milk, juices, Gatorade, chips, sodas, lottery, and a lot of energy drinks. In Simi Valley, where I had my store, there was nine businesses with wine and beer license within 1.1 mile, and the city council still approved a strip cocaine next to our liquor store, making it a total of 10 businesses with beer and wine license.
Thank you, Mrs. Cypress. Let's see if we have any, your time is up, but perhaps we do have questions from council members regarding your application.
I would like to say one more thing.
Yep.
And just last year, in 2012, according to my CPA, I made $729,389 for the lottery, and 34% went to the schools, which is over $200,000. So I was really involved with, with the lottery and everything. So if you could just give us a chance, and with this mini-market, it's not just a liquor store. I ran it the proper way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is, did you have a question? Mrs. Irwin actually had a question for you, Mrs. Cypress.
The, the market that you ran in Simi, that just, you just had a beer and wine license?
No, hard liquor too.
Hard liquor too?
Yes.
And so that's why you want the hard liquor here also?
Because I already have that license, and I don't sell cheap, quality liquor where people can just come. I sell for working-class people, that they can just buy it and take it home and relax.
All right. Thank you.
All right. The next speaker is John, followed by Paula Williams. And John, I apologize, I'm not able to decipher the last name.
My name is John Gensvene, commonly spelled. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks for 37 years. This is my first time in this chamber. This easy access to speak to council is actually quite refreshing. Thank you. I'm here, basically, I'm friends with the Cipress family. They live on my street. I've known them for about 14 years. I find them to be really great, upstanding citizens, people that I'm kind of proud to have in this city that I love. I have a little insight. I've been to their store in Simi Valley, and I'm going to tell you, it's like no liquor store you've ever been into. I've been in our local liquor stores, and usually the first thing I'm faced with is pornographic magazines, pornographic videos, risque type of banners put up on the wall. Absolutely none of that in this store. It was really a family type of business. I would have no difficulty at all bringing my grandchildren into that store, because I know they'd see nothing other than a shrunken Vons Market. It's basically what it is. It's a mini-market. And I'm assuming that that's what they're trying to open here. And if that's really what they're after, I really don't understand a clear argument against it. It provides a similar service to a Vons Market, but in a much smaller scale. People can walk there, maybe can't walk to the nearby markets. I think it's kind of a loss, from what I've seen, a loss for Simi Valley and a possible win for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gensvene. Paula Williams, followed by Nick Kidway.
Madam Mayor, City Council. I so miss the Quick Stop Market that was just within a few feet of my office. It was a very family-friendly kind of store. It reminded me a lot of the small grocery stores back in the Midwest, where I grew up a long, long time ago. The liquor was, the hard liquor was behind the counter, and so it wasn't even an in-your-face part of the business. It was just there. This was really basically a little grocery store. It was a place where neighbors could just kind of stop in and pick up something on the way home, and it's a store where my staff spent a lot of unbillable time buying snacks, and we do miss it. I've known Mr. and Mrs. Cipress for over 10 years, as clients, as business neighbors, and as friends. I've gotten to know their children. I've watched them struggle to build that business, and to pay off the debt that they incurred to acquire that business. And I'm very sorry that the city I live in, Simi Valley, lost such an asset. I've witnessed and appreciate the honest and ethical manner with which they operated their business, and with which they lived their lives. Based on their history, their experience, and work ethic will generate many, many tax dollars for the city of Thousand Oaks. They will put employees to work, and they'll do so in a manner consistent with their history of providing a clean, quality shopping environment. I understand the city wanting to limit certain types of businesses. It makes sense. However, the Cipress market was not that type of business. However, the Cypress Market was not that type of business, and neither will this one be. I'm hopeful that you'll look at their history and decide favorably upon their application, and that you'll be able to make my city's loss, Thousand Oaks' gain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Last speaker, Nick Kidway.
Nick Kidway, Director Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Mayor, Council, I should have really gone home after a 5-0 vote for more taxes. Well, on this, we have the staff on this issue, the council, and concerned citizens in sync. But it is also hypocritical for the council and the mayor, especially when she wrote an op-ed against hooters in the Akon, but no one on this day gave us a hearing on the issue so that it was approved on an administrative hearing basis. In fact, I am so happy to hear the chief talk about the drinking in the park, but the sergeant who testified at the administrative hearing gave a complete green light to hooters when all you have to do is just go to YouTube and put "hooters, gangs, hooters fights, hooters troubles," and hundreds of hits come up, and that's why so many of these places have been closed. This is factual. Being a good citizen or having high moral character has nothing to do with opening a store where people will maybe drink and then drive a 10,000-pound car and hit somebody. That's the problem that we are facing, that's what we are against, and that's what ABC has documented, that there is an abundance, too much, I don't know if I mean abundance, the word is saturation, of liquor stores. And I'm glad that they have done this for Thousand Oaks, because you generally hear about these things in L.A., but you don't hear it over here. If T O TV can show the overhead, this is my application for a hearing for the hooters' license, and I've been in touch with them, so I've had quite an education about the process. And for one thing, they are very responsive to residents, and they're not out to get money. But the interesting thing is that hooters bought an existing license, and in fact, the research that I did, and the applicant should really be called back, as I saw somebody with a similar name in Ojai with a deli, and they had purchased a license from somebody else. So one of the tricks is to buy an existing license, because then you don't have to go through the same rigorous process that you have to go through with a new license. It costs more money, so I don't know if they were trying to save some money. And then I will talk about just the food aspect, Brent's Deli, the Greek burger place around here, in Palm Plaza, there are so many, the Latin Market, just down the street, closer to 299 East Thousand Oaks Block. You have to take care of the existing businesses and make sure that they are not cannibalized. I joined staff in opposing this for the right reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. All right, we don't have any additional speakers. I do have, Mr. Fox, then I also have a question, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, maybe you can help counsel a little bit more with the concern about increased crime, and in particular, the concern about individuals buying liquor and then going to the rear of a business and sitting in their car and drinking.
First of all, council member, I'm sure that this is a very fine family, and they run a great business. I'm looking at it strictly from a safety perspective of the amount of businesses in there, the amount of crimes that are reported. Typically, with these types of businesses, whether it's a 7-Eleven or whatever type it might be, the mini-market that has sandwiches and other things, and alcohol, whether it's beer, wine, or hard liquor, typically, we have people who will buy food sitting in the parking lot, people who drink to excess go to a park. I'm not blaming one particular business, and I'm not suggesting their business, they would run it that way. What I am saying is, with double the amount of alcohol establishments already there, set by the ABC, and adding one more, I don't see the upside to our safety in this reporting district, which is a very high volume of calls.
So, in other words, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because let me just say, these are difficult, and it's not lost on the council, at least this council member that is, this is your livelihood, this is a business, and it's, I'm glad the chief mentioned, this in no way is a reflection on you as individuals, certainly your family, your children, and the type of businesses that you run. And that is kind of the foundation for my question, Chief, that even on the assumption that this family runs a responsible, legal, by every measurable standard respectable business, it's your professional view that just the addition of this type of business in this area presents an increased safety issue?
And I base that on an application that was pulled by an applicant in 2011, that happened to be a 7-Eleven, and it was 171%. Now, in 2013, we're at 281%. I can only think that another business would add to that 281%. Again, they seem like a great family. This is not, I would love to support them in other areas of the city, they're very supportive of communities, the other two people who spoke, very respectful, very articulate. I base this on public safety. And the large jump between 2011 with a similar type of business to 2013, I quite frankly don't see the upside if we add any business by any owner of that type in that particular area of our city.
And I think, and I'm glad you put that at the end, because that really, when we boil this down, it's really not about the family, it's not about the business owner, while certainly irresponsible business owners would add to your business, so to speak, but what we are hearing is that even if this business is run with the highest professional standards and run exactly how it's supposed to operate professionally, responsive to the community, responsive to law enforcement, it's the addition of this type of business in this area that's really the basis for your recommendation to deny the application.
Yes.
All right.
But I would also like to add, if I can, that I mentioned earlier, we look at things on a case-by-case, it's just not a blanket denial. We look at the numbers, we look on the impact, and that's where, that's my greatest problem with it.
Fair enough.
Chief Pentis, Chief Pentis of the, we obviously had quite a raise, a rise in crime over the last two years in that district. Do we know that the rise in crime is due to alcohol?
In part, I read, when you have, I read some of the statistics of some of the crimes, the burglaries, vehicle burglaries, other burglaries, thefts, domestic violence. I cannot say that alcohol was a part in every one of these crimes, that's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting, well, I'm saying that we factually have a very high number of crimes reported, a portion of those are alcohol-related.
Do we know what the crime rate was in Simi Valley, where the store was formally located?
I do not.
Okay, perhaps, I'm not sure whether the Cypress family would be able to answer that. Can you please approach the podium, because I would like to ask you if you had any problems with the sale of alcohol at your store in Simi Valley?
No, I didn't, because there was always a police officer using my bathroom, or always somebody dropping by or having coffee with me. But no, I never had a problem. But then, at the same time, there was eight liquor stores within 1 mile, 1.1 mile, close to me. I don't know how it was out there, but I know I never had a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any questions? Mrs. Irwin.
I wasn't clear, the 7-Eleven, was that turned down? No?
The 7-Eleven was never really fully processed, they were in the application stage, we had done the analysis and informed the applicant of the tentative recommendation that we were going to give to council, which was to deny that application. Prior to that, coming to the council, the applicant basically withdrew the application, didn't pursue it.
Oh, so basically, you were going to turn that down for the same reason that you're recommending?
It would have been turned down for the exact, well, the recommendation for denial would have been exactly as this one is.
And that was in the same reporting area?
It was, it was slightly to the east along Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
And then, you're talking about that you basically have twice as many establishments as ABC defines it for oversaturation. How did we get to that point? I mean, how did the other four, did they come in front of council, or how were those approved?
I believe many of these may have predated, some of these have been long-established businesses. The eight that are in here, in the police departments, Siesta Markets, 7-Eleven, Winners, I believe all these businesses, to some extent, predated, as they've been a long time. Teal Liquor's been there for a very long time, Hampshire Liquor's been there for a very long time. Rancho Liquor has been there for a while, I don't believe, I believe that may have predated this also, I'm not totally sure. But at the time these came through, a lot, first of all, many of them were before the process, and I, in fact, I believe most of all of them were before the process.
So, and once there's a license there, I assume it's very difficult to subtract from that number unless the business closes, or do they have the right to sell the license?
They do have a right to hold the license, I think that's similar to this applicant, this applicant still holds the license they had in Simi and are able to reestablish that license in another location. If they reestablished it within the same census tract within Simi, they would not have had to go through any type of process. Similar, if a business here would move within the census district, they would not have to reapply for a public convenience in the Cessy. If they moved outside the district into an area that was over-concentrated, they would have to go through that process.
So, you really can never reduce it below, every time you allow another one, you can never reduce it below that number, unless they move out of the area?
Unless the business goes, would terminate, and then we would have the opportunity, possibly, in another location within that census district for another application that would be considered under this.
Now, how many areas are saturated? I mean, are most of our business areas saturated? Has there been some look at, is there any area that's, you know, has a low crime rate?
To the best of my knowledge, since we've been dealing with this process, there's, most of all our major commercial areas that we've dealt with are all oversaturated. The only one I'm aware of was a, I believe, the market that went in at the Village of Joseph Yentos, the Village Market, or Village Trader, I believe, that was in an area that was not over-concentrated, and therefore did not have to go through this process at all.
Is there any area where the crime rate is so low that you would, even though it was saturated, that you would be willing to recommend approval?
As I said, we look at it case-by-case basis, and the type of store, the area, what type of crime is going on, as Councilmember Fox asked, do you think it would cause an increase? In some areas, my answer may be different. But what I base it from 2011 to date, I've got no reason to think otherwise, but to answer your question, yes, that's why we look at it case-by-case.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? None? Okay, then we can open it up for a discussion and/or motion. Mr. Adams.
A discussion, how about that? Yeah, I must say, echoing Chief Pentis's remarks, and Councilmember Fox, and I think we all feel this way, I have absolutely no reservations about the Cypress family. I know you're fine, upstanding folks, I know you run a good, clean business. My reservations are about the district, not about you, about the district. And I find it kind of alarming that the crime rate has jumped from just in the last couple of years to what it is now, three times the average for any of our other districts. And, you know, God, there's four liquor stores there, two markets selling alcohol, 19 restaurants selling alcohol, and if you accept the premise that, as stated in the staff report, that liquor stores are regularly and disproportionately associated with criminal activity, what I'm concerned about here is that public safety could be affected, could be diminished, and I know that this council has always had public safety as the number-one priority, and I know the citizens feel the same way. But, you know, again, it's not you, it's the districts, and I welcome any other comments from my fellow council members.
Would you like to turn that into a motion?
Why don't we discuss it a little bit?
Mr. Price?
Yeah, I too have to echo the sentiments of both staff and fellow council members here. Having been in law enforcement for 34 years now, I know that there are problems that are inherent with any location that, or potentially inherent in any location that sells alcohol. We've had that experience here in Thousand Oaks, most recently with a number of folks who came to town and wanted to help themselves do some high-end liquor at Total Wine &amp; More. Fortunately, the sheriffs caught them. I walked into my desk today, and we had another situation that came across my desk where an otherwise well-run business fell victim to a couple people that wanted to come in there and do a beer run. And there isn't much that you can do to stop those things. So it's unfortunate, and I too believe that these nice folks that came out with the Cypress family are certainly going well beyond in recommending them for this business in this location. I just, I think we have to err on the side of caution here, and we need to be concerned with public safety, and for all the reasons stated previously, I would not be able to support it.
Would you like that to turn into a motion?
I would, I would make the motion.
Okay. Mr. or Mrs., who would like to go? Mrs. Irwin?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I, yeah, again, these are difficult. I was sitting here, and I can remember a council meeting when I was on the Planning Commission, none of you, I don't think, were around at the time, and it was for a billiards hall. I looked up, and I'm sure Mr. Cohen remembers it, and probably Mr. Prescott, and it was right next door, where the Rhineland Deli, that shopping center. And we did not approve it at the Planning Commission level, and Mayor Emeritus Fiori voted for the billiards hall, and we were concerned about safety, and the police chief was sitting there. And I was struck by Alex's insight into, we were, he felt, that the city was overreacting on the public safety issue with respect to people that are showing up at a place to shoot some pool, have a couple of beers, and he didn't see that as a public safety threat. And I believe the billiards hall was actually approved, and it was in business for a while, eventually it went out of business. And I was reflecting on that here this evening. I think the difference is, for me, and I'm going to support the motion, and I believe the value of having five of us up here as human beings that do come from different life experiences, that's why we have city councils, and that's precisely why we don't just have staff people reading out of a municipal code and making decisions for the folks. And so while I'm not going to necessarily vote in your favor this evening, I want you to know that I think I speak for the entire council, it's not lost on any of us that we're dealing with human beings, that sometimes our decisions have a big impact on. That being said, I believe that as a council, when we're going to differ with staff, we need a good reason. When we're going to differ with staff that is in charge of public safety, we need clear and convincing evidence. And in my view, I have not seen clear and convincing evidence to dispute what the police chief has said. And as difficult as it is, I'm sure they run a great business, that's why I asked Chief Pentis, the fact that they run a great business really is not the issue here. It's the addition of one more business that sells alcohol that our police chief is telling us is going to cause a problem, already in a problem area that I think all of us are relatively alarmed at a 280%, 1% increase in crime. So with that, I'm going to support the motion.
Mrs. Irwin.
Now, this is really difficult, because we always want to welcome new businesses into the city, and I would really hope that maybe our Economic Development Director can see if there are any more appropriate locations for you, because we would hate to lose your family if there is an appropriate location that has a lower crime rate. But I think statistically, we know that alcohol, oversaturation of alcohol leads to of alcohol leads to higher crime rates. I mean, if you look at assaults or you looked at domestic violence, it's almost 100% alcohol or drug related. So this is, you know, nobody's, nobody can really dispute those type of statistics. So I apologize. I, I wish we could do something differently, but I, I think that we have to support our police chief. Public safety is the number one priority in Thousand Oaks, and I don't think that this would help our numbers in that area. So I will be supporting Mr. Price's recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Irwin. And I would like to add just a few comments, very short comments. We, Thousand Oaks always welcomes new business to town, especially coming from a wonderful family such as yours, a hardworking family. We always, always appreciate that. But we have to look at the nature of the business, not who conducts the business, but the nature of the business. And the evidence before us unfortunately does not warrant or support having another liquor store or business which will sell alcohol, hard liquor and, and other alcohol in that particular area. And it saddens me to see how hard you have been working, but I have a responsibility as a council member to protect public safety. The evidence overwhelming coming from the ABC and also from our police department and Chief Pentis. And I will support the motion, but it's with a heavy heart. And I do hope that our economic development director, Mr. Hader Alawami, will be able to assist you in perhaps finding another location. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item is item 10, which deals with our community events endowment fund grants. And we will have a presentation by our cultural affairs commission, commission member David Mead. And I believe also we will have Eloise Cohen with the Alliance for the Arts. But first here we have Mr. Mead. Good evening. Thank you for waiting.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm pleased to appear before you tonight to present our recommendations with regard to the community events endowment fund and the theater performance credit grants. Going to the background for some of you council members who weren't on the council at the time, in March 2011, the city council approved the transfer of those two programs to the cultural affairs commission for review of the applications and to make recommendations to the city council. The community events endowment fund, as you may recall, recall is, is $100,000 in total with $85,000 reviewed and recommended by the cultural affairs commission to the city council with $15,000 held for off-cycle funding requests. And then within that fund, two-thirds of the dollars are supposed to go to arts and cultural fair events, and a third of the funds are supposed to go to community activity events. And then for the theater performance credits, there's a total $90,000 in annual financial support for, to help organizations put on shows in our two wonderful theaters. And that, the theater performance credits are awarded in partnership with the Alliance for the Arts and their great efforts that they make to raise monies for the theaters. With regard to the fiscal year 2013-14 CEF grant allocations, we received a total of 34 grants requesting monies. And of that, we're recommending award of a total of $85,000. We, one grant will come to you off-cycle, actually two grants are going to come to you off-cycle in a few weeks. We won't go into those. One was previously awarded by you for an off-cycle to the Thousand Oaks Little League. And then there were three entities as part of our review process that were, where we're recommending denial of funding. And actually, one of those is going to be the off-cycle one, and another one was, the money was actually given to them through the theater credits. And you can see, do you have the slide up with the grantees? The slide you have up there on the screen shows the grantees that we're recommending. And you have your report, the dollar amounts that, for each one of those grantees. And then for the theater credit allocations for the fiscal year 2013-14, 15 theater performance credits for a total of $90,000. And one group was denied funding recommendation. And then there's the listing that you'll see on the screen of the recommended grantees for that fund. And you also have in your report the specific dollar amounts that are being recommended for the theater credits. So again, just to summarize, we're recommending the award of a total of $85,000 in the community events endowment fund and a total of $90,000 for the theater performance credits. And then, so before we get to any questions you may have, I'd like to bring up Eloise Cohen. She's a, also a member of the cultural affairs commission and also a member of the Alliance for the Arts.
Thank you, Mr. Mead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Eloise Cohen, Thousand Oaks resident for this month 50 years and a proud to serve on the Thousand Oaks Cultural Affairs Commission and the Grants Committee with David. The Alliance for the Arts is very happy to provide $300,000 annually to the city's theater fund. And $90,000 of this money is used for the purpose of providing performing arts grants in partnership with the City of Thousand Oaks Cultural Affairs Department for community performance groups. And as you've heard from David, the chair of the Grants Committee, this year, the Cultural Affairs Commission recommended the partial funding of 15 performing arts groups for the City of Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts Cultural Affairs Department performing arts grants at the Civic Arts Plaza. The Alliance for the Arts is very proud to be a partner with the city through the auspices of its theater fund contributions in benefiting so many of our community groups who would otherwise be unable to use these magnificent theaters. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any questions?
Mrs. Irwin?
I just want to know with the, the Thousand Oaks repertory, their award amount is, for credits is twice as high as they requested. Is that because you denied them on the other side?
Right. We, as you know, the requests always exceed the amounts we have. And so in the miracle of working, we did a little juggling and basically gave them more in the one. And, and so they basically got, you know, what they would have or could have gotten potentially in the other one where we gave them zero by giving them more in the other one.
Okay. And then one of the big requests I see is the Keneho Schools Foundation. And they ended up receiving a much lower amount. What was the reason for that?
Right. I'm just looking. You know, off, off the top of my head, you know, we, I can't remember honestly. We received so many applications and I, I just don't remember that one. Just to recall though, they, they requested $25,000, but the limitations of the fund itself is the maximum they could ever receive would be $8,500. So while you see a $25,000 one there, the most they could have gotten was $8,500. And from my recollection, again, you know, $2,000 was in the ballpark of, of what we felt was reasonable based upon what they're doing, the, the, you know, community attendance and, and things of that nature. We're all taking into consideration.
So I, I guess I, maybe the more general question is, I'm sure a lot of people, a lot of these organizations way over request to try and get the amount that they were actually going after. How do you kind of filter through all that as a committee?
Right. Well, as a general rule from the very, from, right from the start, we obviously recognize and say to each other, just remember the most they could, you could get, anyone could get would be $8,500. And then, and then the next step is, everyone has to have matching funds. We, the city does not give 100% funding for events. So if you don't have the matching funds or your matching funds are limited, then that may reduce you down even more. And then we have to evaluate all of these on basis on how many, you know, what the event is, expected attendance, the, the benefit to the community. I mean, there's a multitude of factors. And then we have score sheets and, and to rate them. And, and so then we, you know, we have to come up with what we think is fair and reasonable.
Okay. I, I am, I, I want to say, as I always do, Mr. Mead and Mrs. Cohen, that we really appreciate the work you do on this. It's something that we certainly wouldn't want to go through. And, and I know you're very analytical and even-minded as you go through these numbers. And, and we appreciate your, your community service. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Irwin. I do have a question, and it's actually a follow-up to Mrs. Irwin's question about the Keneho Schools Foundation. Obviously, the applicants know how much money there is to give out. And why would somebody come in with a $100,000 request total?
Well, there are people, I'm a lawyer and there's a lot of people that don't read papers. And right in the grant application itself, it says the limit in there. And for whatever reason, either people are hoping for more and praying that will maybe overlook that requirement, or I, I don't know. But, but the paperwork and the application clearly indicates in there that the maximum they can get is $8,500 or 10% of the budget for the event, whichever is less. And so I'm not sure that there's much more we can do to make it clearer than that in the paperwork. And, but I've been doing this for, you know, 10 years now. And every year, we get applicants who request more than what the maximum is that they can receive.
It's okay to request more, but when I saw the total of $100,000, I was a little surprised.
Right, yes. It just, it, it happens.
All right. Thank you very much. And again, thank you as well from the, for your service for the last 10 years.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there are no further questions, we can call for a motion? Would you like to make a motion, Mrs. Irwin?
I'll move.
Madam Mayor, I believe we have a speaker card?
Oh, I'm s-
Do we have a speaker card? I just thought we... Oh, Mr. Kidway. You were hiding in the back. You don't want it to speak? No, there, I think I called them all. All right. Thank you.
All right. I would like to move the staff recommendation to award the community events endowment fund grants and authorize expenditures in the amount of $87,000. And to award the City of Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts Theater Performance Credits, Credit Grants and authorize the expenditure of $90,000.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 11, dealing with the redevelopment agency, or at least a former redevelopment agency, and expending excess bond proceeds. Oh my gosh, sounds riveting. John Adams, our finance, I know, I'm copying it. Well, in this case, he's not our finance director. You are our treasurer.
Yes.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. And I'll try my best to make this riveting and short. So if I slip, skips through slides, you'll appreciate that. Just quickly, this, tonight, staff's here to present both to the successor agency board and the city council an agreement between the two entities to spend bond proceeds. I'll open this up by saying, also available as part of the team is Mr. Jay Spurgeon, who's our public works director, Chris Norman, who's actually sitting up on the dais with the council, and John Prescott, our community development director. So just quickly, just quick background, redevelopment agencies, when they existed, issued debt or bonds to fund capital projects, specifically redevelopment projects. At the point of dissolution, which happened in June of 2011, Thousand Oaks had approximately $14 million in unspent bond proceeds. These funds were originally, existed for specific projects that did not have contractual obligations. So under the dissolution law, and actually this was the second law, AB 1484, there was specific language that talked about how successor agencies can retain these bond proceeds, these unspent, unobligated bond proceeds to complete projects as they were originally intended. So just a few things. One, we must receive our finding of completion, which is pending. We're in discussions with the DOF on getting that. They must be used for the original intention. We do have bond indentures that talk about how the bond proceeds will be spent. And then also it requires an enforceable obligation that will be ultimately approved by the DOF and the oversight board. So tonight, staff is in front of you presenting the option that, to have an agreement between the successor agency and the city to spend those bond proceeds. And this is really a mechanism to start that process. It just is asking for the agreement to be approved between the two entities in order to speed up the process as we go through the spending of the bond proceeds. It will streamline the process. As far as the timing, by having this agreement or this enforceable obligation, we can, once the projects are ready to bid and we can move forward. The city will manage these projects, and that was always the intention. Also, it avoids delays. Right now, we are going to the oversight board to have expenditures approved for next January through June. And that process is usually nine months prior. So this hopefully will streamline that process. Just talk about process. The, the agreement will be between the successor agency and the city. It will require oversight board approval. They'll consider the agreement. And then once it's approved by the oversight board, it will go to the DOF for their approval. DOF will review it. We will have probably discussions with them. As we step through the law, a lot of new things are coming up. And this is sort of a way of creating that enforceable obligation. And then we talked about the specific projects as part of the capital budget process. Those proceeds were always intended to do capital improvements, infrastructure. And in the capital budget, there are two projects, Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Newberry Park project areas. So in summary, this agreement is creating the agreement between the successor agency and the city to spend the bond proceeds. Tonight, it will be approved by city council and the successor agency. It will be presented to the oversight board tomorrow at their meeting. So with that, I will end my presentation and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Questions? No questions, questions at all? Okay. We do have a speaker. Nick Kidway.
Nick Kidway, Director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor, Council. I don't know, this city does not seem to realize that the party is over. It's been over for a while. It is unanimous, the governor, the assembly, senate, even the courts have chimed in that because of the abuse of redevelopment agencies, and Thousand Oaks is at the top of it, where you give lakes, Mr. Crusoe, access to all the, these, this property for a dollar a year, spend $300,000 on angle parking and refuse to allow disabled people to park there. It, the list goes on and on. And that's why it is history that these things are supposed to be wound down. But this city is really not cooperating with the taxpayers tomorrow and in the past also. The meetings are held at 3:00 in the afternoon. And even though the TV cameras, everything is there. But, and there's no one, even Ms. De La Pena doesn't make the motion, that the TV should be turned on so that people can know what is happening with their taxes. And it is bad. If TO TV can show, this is the important thing that has been not brought out, that we have $121 million debt from this tax waste in this city. It turns out to $930 per person in the valley, 130,000 people. If you divide that among 80,000 voters, because those are the people that really matter, in my humble opinion, that's $1,500 per person. And for a family of three, that's a debt of $4,500 per family. And what have we got? Nothing. I mean, the Tea Party, I mean, where are you? I mean, this is at the local level and it has sheer abuse and waste. And this, this body wants to continue it. What you're supposed to do, if you have money that you did not expend, and this was because of incompetence on the part of the staff, because the staff did not- of incompetence on the part of the staff, because the staff did not assign contracts, and that's one of the reasons. It was not because the Department of Finance has an income poops there or they hate Thousand Oaks. It's because you did not follow the rules, you have this extra money available. There should be, are two options, in my humble opinion, not the one that you are talking about. One is to pay down the debt. That would be the best, and I cannot understand for the life of me why anybody would not want that. The second would be to return the money to the state, which has been done. $4 billion have already been collected by the state, and it has been distributed to college districts, school districts, et cetera. And those people who are outraged by this debt, you can still make a difference right to the governor. In fact, the controller's office has made, I have the information in the redevelopment agents, in the pink packet also, Santa Clara and other cities have been taken to task. I don't understand why this city has escaped it, except that these projects have been turned down. Please, for God's sake, do the right thing for once.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. I do have a question for Mr. Adams really quickly. Which projects are affected by this?
When you mean projects that we anticipate doing with the bond proceeds? In Newberry Park, there's the Kelly Road, storm drain, major infrastructure that the money was always planned on spending. It's called out in the bond indenture. And then the other one, if you remember, there was the Thousand Oaks Boulevard improvements, specifically undergrounding. And that's where the proceeds would be then spent, is on the undergrounding on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Both of these projects are complete infrastructure, you know, city infrastructure projects. So originally, the bonds were issued for those intended purposes. The law was very specific in allowing successor agencies the ability to retain these unspent bond proceeds as long as they turned over all their other assets to build these projects. And I think responding to the speaker, I think that's very critical. The city has turned over $7 million to taxing entities as part of this process. The legislation allows the city to retain these bond proceeds to be spent for infrastructure, and we are just doing what is in the best interest of this community. So those are, response to your question and in my two cents.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, these.
Oh, question. Okay.
Thank you. These bonds were issued in 2002 for Newberry Road, 2005 for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This money should be spent here in Thousand Oaks. To return it to the state of California would be an absolute disservice to the residents of Thousand Oaks. I can tell you that. Furthermore, I can't think of a better project than to underground the utility poles on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. It wasn't, I don't know, three, four years ago, a windstorm swept through the Boulevard and knocked a bunch of those poles down. It's a, it's a public safety issue, and it's also an issue of aesthetics. We want our Boulevard to look nice. This is a good expenditure for the funds. But anyway, regardless, I recommend, I move that we approve the staff recommendation to expend the excess bond proceeds.
That would be recommendation one and two?
One and two. Thank you.
All right. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Learning from the best. Number 12, we have a follow-up report on conferences attended by council members. We had one in California, in Sacramento, I should say, by the League of California Cities Annual Conference, and that will be presented by Joe Price, Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Irwin and I attended the League of California Cities Annual Conference in Sacramento between September 18th and 20th. Absolutely wonderful conference with many, many different engaging sessions, two spectacular keynote speakers, and I want to mention them by name for anybody who's watching. If you ever get an opportunity to see either of these gentlemen speak or present, they're absolutely wonderful. Eric Wall, who is a graffiti artist and a very motivational speaker as well, had a great message about taking chances and just wonderful. Followed by Lowell Catlett, who is a professor at University of New Mexico, and he's a professor of economics. And I see Mr. Adams has left, but a great message, hilarious speaker, a lot of hope and inspiration in what he had to say, so it was fabulous. If you ever get a chance to listen to either of those two, I would jump at that. We also attended Public Safety Policy Committee, which we both sit on, where we passed a resolution dealing with some of the effects of AB 109, the realignment issue that is forcing people out of prisons and back onto our streets. That was eventually moved up to the General Assembly, and it is now the league's position that the legislature pursue flash incarceration for people who are on unsupervised probation. So we also had Channel Counties Division meeting and luncheon up there, where our own council member Jackie Irwin was installed as the first vice president of the Channel Counties Division of League of California Cities. So tremendous honor for her. She'll be following up soon, I'm sure, as president of the Channel Counties. And it was overall a wonderful learning experience, and I know I learned a great deal from it. So with that, submit it.
Thank you. And the staff report, or I should say, the councilmember Price's and councilmember Irwin's report was in the supplemental packet. All right. Mr. Powers, any follow-up items or announcements?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no follow-up items at this time.
Then our Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Chris Norman, will make an announcement regarding our closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, mayor of the council. Council tonight will adjourn to closed session for a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Karen Montana versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number 56-2011-00408151-CU-WM-SIM, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. There will be no reportable action from that meeting.
Thank you. And we will adjourn tonight's meeting until our next meeting, October 8th. Have a good night.